Also, if you are, if you have, how many of you, is this your first time in the Revelation Bible study? Okay, so many people have asked me, "I thought you were gonna record it and put it online and all of that." So bear with me, or bear with us, the very first week, we had an access point for our Wi-Fi, that failed. And then the second week, it didn't connect properly, and so we're trying a little bit different process today. And that is, we're just gonna be recording it from this camera, but then we're gonna load it onto YouTube later. So here's the deal, I'm hoping that this one goes on YouTube this coming week. The previous two weeks, if you missed, I will re-record them. And so they will be available on YouTube for you to watch at your convenience. Or if you missed the first two, do not despair, we'll have them online, okay? Any questions on that before we get started? All right, let's begin with a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, I thank you for your Word, I thank you that it's true, I thank you that our strength is in it, because it draws us closer to Jesus. And so Lord, I pray that you bless our time in your Word. We pray it in the name of Jesus, and everyone said, "Amen." So as a reminder, this is where you find all of the stuff. So you can get the handout, obviously it's not nicely bound and all of that, but you can get the handout there. There's other handouts that I didn't want to make this handout be like 50 pages. It's already, what, 27 pages? I didn't want it to be huge, and so I'm gonna add other things to it, not to this, but I'll give you other handouts during our time together in Revelation. And so I'll hand those out to you in class, but if you didn't make it, they'll be online. And so if you need that handout, it's there. Or if there are times where, like for example, I said in the very first week, I owe a lot to a former professor at the Concordia Seminary, his name is Dr. Lewis Brighton. You're gonna have an opportunity to hear from him on video, but I'll put those videos online when they're available, and you can just go on there, click on that, on the link, and you can watch the video. All right, so you all should have, if you don't have, a sheet on your table that looks like this. Find a table that does have a sheet on it that looks like this. So maybe Ken, through Andrew, maybe those tables, you might not have one. Just find a table that does, okay? So here's what I want you to do, I want you to take maybe five minutes, because honestly, I'm overjoyed that we have this many people in the Word, especially in the book of Revelation. But what I wanna do is I wanna make sure that, to be honest with you, sometimes I get tired of hearing myself talk. You don't wanna hear me talk, blah, just all this stuff, right? I want you to be able to interact with it, I want you to discuss things together, I want you to wrestle with some things together at your tables. And so maybe not each week, but some weeks, I want us to just talk about some stuff, and I want us to wrestle with some things. So here's the deal, is we're gonna finish out chapter one today, and then chapter two begins the seven letters to the churches. And so we talked about last week that the number seven is representative of all churches. Now these are real churches, so this is not metaphorical, these are real churches, but there's seven as a symbolic way of saying all churches. So the letter to Ephesus, the letter to Pergamum, and Thyatira, and Laodicea, all of those, is a letter that applies to all the churches, okay? So with that in mind, I want us to begin to prepare to think about the church. And you can certainly think about Prince of Peace, but I want you to think more generic if you can, just about the church, capital C, okay? So here's what I want you to do. So on your table, on the top quadrant, you have a green square or rectangle, and that says, "Done well and keep doing well." So write one thing as a table, what's one thing that the church does well and needs to keep doing well? Got it? Then in the light green square, what is it that is done well? That, you know, either people in the church or in the world, they kinda look at it and they say, "We really don't care." "You do a good job at it, but we really don't care." The yellow is, "It's not done well, and we don't care that you don't do it well." A lot of times, what'll happen is in that yellow quadrant, maybe you won't have anything, but maybe you will, who knows? So that is just, what does the church do well? And frankly, nobody cares that you don't do it well, okay? The red, obviously, is, all right, what does the church not do well? And shame on us, we need to do well. Does that make sense? So what are we good at at the church, in the church, and we need to continue to do it well? What are we really good at, but nobody really cares? What are we not good at, nobody really cares that we're not good at it? What are we not good at, but we should be good at it? Does that make sense? So talk amongst your tables, figure out one thing maybe, that you can put in each quadrant. Yeah, good question, Richard asked, I'm gonna give that up to you. So Richard asked, is it people inside the church, or is it people outside the church? I think it's, answer that question the way you think is best, because I think both are valid. In my mind, I'm thinking probably, what do people outside the church think about? And take like five minutes. Good morning. Yeah, no worries, no worries. Trying to figure that out?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure it out. I can't figure out the lighting, where that stupid setting is.
You know, um...
Do you have any idea?
Yeah, at least on that TV, it's on HDMI one.
How'd you get to that?
Oh, home button, yeah, yep. Okay, we could talk forever on this topic, I hope you had an opportunity, just to speak briefly and talk together as a table. So would anybody like to share anything you said? What does the church do well, or what does the church need to continue to do well? Anybody? What, who? Worship, okay, all right. Bible-based worship, okay, Janet? Okay, so she said that the church does a good job of taking care of each other, and we need to continue to do that well, okay? Anybody else? Yep? Okay, the milestones in alignment with the Word, so that's well, and keep doing that well? Any, yes?
Outreach, meeting the needs of those in our community.
Okay, so do a good job at outreach, and need to continue to do a good job at outreach? How about anything in that bottom white, or bottom right quadrant, that the church does a good job of, but nobody cares?
We said worship.
Worship, okay. Isn't that interesting? Okay, you know, you're not wrong, I mean, you know, there are... Yeah, I mean, there are people at Starbucks right now, who gathering with you people in worship isn't even on their radar. In other words, they're not sitting there thinking, "Should I go to church today?" Not even part of the program, so good point. Anybody else, what would you say in that bottom right quadrant?
Potlucks.
Potlucks, okay. Hey, hey, don't be dogging on Green Jello now. And what do they call it, like Waldorf salad, or whatever it is? I get it, I get it, Grandma's casserole, don't disrespect Grandma's casserole, but I get it. Chili cook-off, yeah, I mean, you know, stuff like that, you know, we can do a good job, but people don't really care about it, okay, get it? Anything else? Do you have anything in the yellow quadrant where the church is really good, is not good at it, and frankly, people don't care if we're good at it or not? Yeah? Oh, make, so, okay, so that's a good one, because Janet said make disciples. So the church does not do a good job at making disciples, and nobody cares whether or not we don't do a good job of making disciples. Does that hurt?
Yes.
I hope it does, because what did Jesus say? Go make disciples, okay, we'll get into that, okay? Anything else in that yellow quadrant? We don't do a good job, and nobody cares that we do a good job? Anybody?
I got one, just going through the motions of, you know, the church, everything, it's just kinda going through the motions.
Yeah, so Heather said going through the motions. So, you know, kind of, don't raise your hands, but how many of you have gotten up on Sunday morning and come to worship? Why? Because it's what I do, right? And I'm just doing it because that's what I've always done. But do I come to worship because I hear that my sins are forgiven, and I get to hear the gospel, and I get the encouragement that Jesus loves me and forgives me, and equips me to live this life for Him and for others? I don't think about that, I'm thinking, when are the Cowboys on? Darn it, the Cowboys aren't on, you know, right? Okay? How about that red quadrant? This is where it's like, eh, you know? Ah, okay, so evangelism is discipleship? So we're not good at it, and we should be good at it, okay? All right, what, yes, Sandra? Hard to get into small groups. There's some, are there cliques in the church? Now, come on, Sandra. Yes? Nancy? All right, let's keep moving, let's keep moving, let's move on. I'm kidding, Nancy, Nancy said not having a pictorial directory. I totally get where you're, I get it, you're right. Because what you're talking about, I think, is community, right? What you're talking about is getting to know people, right?
When you do, you don't know the name, but you'll recognize a face.
Yep.
If you've got that directory, you can...
Yep, I get it, I get it. So getting to know people is something we're not good at, we should be good at. I got it, yes.
Did you just, the first one was supposed to be that we have to take care of each other?
Yeah, 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 it's hard to do that, yep? Yes. Children's ministry, so we're not very good at children's ministry, and we should be good at children's ministry, okay? Good? Anybody else put something in the red quadrant, that we're not good at it, and we should be good at it, yes? Yeah, so Richard says not having the attitude of Jesus. You know, there's a book that was, that's written that says, "I like Jesus, but not the church." Does that sting? Yeah, it does a little bit, right? Because human, we're sinners, right? And so sometimes, I think I heard over here somewhere, somebody said, you know, "We portray to the world that we're kind of better than you, and we're a little holier-than-thou," you know, so maybe not having, not being as humble, so I think that, there's something, yeah, Chuck?
Well, we never got that far in our, we didn't get out of the first square. One of the things I thought was, of being fairly vulnerable here, if you don't live on your phone, you have no idea what's going on.
Ah, yeah, 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 so he...
There's no posters saying, "Hey, really, it's these days, these are where the Bible studies are."
Yep.
I sold phones for 20 years, the last thing I wanna do is live on the phone.
Yeah, I get that. So Chuck's bringing up communication, right? How do you get people connected, right? Okay, Lowell? Ah, okay, so generosity, you're saying, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but are we a generous people? That God, God so loved the world that He gave, and He demonstrated generosity in the person of Christ. So are we generous, or are we not generous, and we should be generous? So good questions, yes, Ruth? Yeah, I think that there is always a challenge for us that we forget. You forget, and Paul reminds us in his letters, that you were once an alien. You were once apart from Christ, but now you are in Christ. So it kinda reminds you to, one, rejoice, and two, help others find Christ as well. So we don't, we kinda get in our own cliques, kinda get in our own world, so good point. Anybody else have anything that they would add in that red quadrant? Yes, Sandy?
You're talking to him over here, right?
Needing to hear law and gospel each week, yeah, true. And we need to, we need to hear that we're sinners. And if I would say it even more clearly than that, that we're sinners who deserve hell and separation from Christ for all eternity. But the goodness of Christ, by His death and resurrection, He forgives you, and you need to hear both of those, right? We need to hear a good, steady dose of both of those, right? Okay, good, anybody else? Yes? Yeah. Yes, so Sue brings up young adults, we're gonna talk about that a little bit today, and just what's happening with them, so anybody else add anything to that?
I was piggybacking off of that one a little bit, and saying definitely young adults, but also having it young adult women's and men's, turn it into a single group.
Yeah.
What women here are singles, and that can ask them out.
Sure. Got it, I got it, yeah. So let's talk a little bit about where the church is at today. Because we kinda have to look in the mirror, because Jesus is about to send some letters to some churches, and what we don't wanna do is we don't wanna stand back and say, "Well," you know, you better get... It's more of like, wait a minute, I'm pointing at the person in the mirror, right? So here is where we're at, just some statistics for you. So this is from 2020. So Pew Research, Barna Research, basically what they're saying is that by about 2060 to 2070, the United States will be less than 50% Christian. So for those of you that have kinda born and raised Christian, does the trend for the church look good or bad? It's not great, right? Okay, and so what we see now, these are just different things, depending on how, on how we do at things like discipleship, and when you have children, and you're discipling them, and bringing them into the church, I mean, so it's either, you know, worst case scenario, it's 35%, best case scenario, it's 54% by 2070, okay? So we look at the church, and we say, "Well, that's not us." No, it is, this is the LCMS. So LCMS from 1947 to 2015, so it's a little bit dated, but this is the number of child baptisms during that period of time. This is all from the LCMS, okay? Here's another statistic that got, has been thrown around, I've seen it on Facebook, and just some different colleagues, where they talk about how the LCMS, you all, is one of the oldest, not in terms of how long they've been around, but in terms of demographics, that they're one of the older average age congregant, or denominations in the country. So you can see here that the average age of a person in the LCMS is 56 years old. Now this was from 2014, do you think that's gotten older or younger?
Older.
Older, okay? So what does that mean? Well, for those, how many of you in here are older than, or 56 or older? Okay? All right? So that means that you, if you're kinda born and raised in the LCMS, baptized, whole nine yards, that means you experienced the LCMS during this period of time. Heyday, right? And so then you come into now, and you're like, "What's going on?", right? That's kinda how we think about it, right? And this, now, here's the thing, who is responsible for this?
We are.
That's right. And I would not say that pastors, church workers, council elders don't have responsibility in that, certainly not saying that. But when Jesus comes and gives a letter to the church, He's giving it to the angel, who has given it to the whole church, okay? And so it is, it is to the church, all right? So here is, let's say specifically the Prince of Peace, so this is all, you can get it on the LCMS website. Sandy Erickson, by the way, puts all of this data together, give her a hand, thank you, Sandy. It is the, she doesn't like to put it together every year, but she does it for us, and does it for you. So this is the top line here, this is total membership, and then you have, and then you have membership confirmed, and then you have average weekly attendance. So many of you, so back in 2014, our average worship attendance was 660. Before then, 800, 700, something like that? Is the trend for Prince of Peace good or not great? Not great, okay? So these are things that I think that we just need to kind of wake up to, and say, "Wait a minute, what's going on?" All right, couple other things, so this is, anybody know the name Carrie Newhoff? Anybody, anybody heard that name before? Nobody? Okay, so he does a podcast, and used to be a senior pastor of a large congregation, and so one of the things that he did, and I listen to him every once in a while, he talks about five, I'm gonna just share with you four of them, but four trends that are really gonna be disruptive that he sees for the church in 2025. So number one is Gen Z, anybody Gen Z in here? Okay, so Gen Z is in retreat and revival at the same time, okay? So when we talk about young adults, when we talk about reaching young adults, they're in retreat and revival at the very same time, okay? That's just, that's what the data shows. Number two is church closure, so the number of churches closing are outpacing new churches being planted by three to one. So for every three churches that close, only one church is planted to replace them, okay? Number three, the church leader, worker, mental health crisis is about to get worse. Number four is evangelism is on life support in most churches. So, I mean, this is all readily available statistics in the church, or for the church, but would you believe, regardless of denomination, 80% of all Christian churches have less than five people, either baptized or come to faith in Jesus Christ, in a calendar year? Almost 80% of all churches do not baptize or see a person come to faith. In a calendar year, it's less than five, for 80% of the churches. That's a problem, okay? So again, I'm not saying all of this to, I'm just saying this to get you prepared to start hearing a letter, right? So this is from, this is again Barna Research, so in 2015, a question was asked, "What about your church's effectiveness at reaching out to unchurched people?" So in 2015, 13% of pastors said the church that they're leading is very effective, 50% said they're somewhat effective. So 63% of pastors surveyed in 2015 said that their church is either very or somewhat effective to reaching out to unchurched people. In 2023, 1% of pastors said that their church, that they're leading and they're part of, is effective, is very effective at reaching out to unchurched people. Okay, 44% said somewhat effective. And then in 2023, so what is that, 54, 55% said either not very effective, or not at all effective at reaching unchurched people. Is that good news or bad news? Bad news. And should we expect anything besides this? Not at the current rate. So what needs to happen? Tell me. Talk to me. What's that? Okay, we gotta think like Jesus?
We have to reach out to them.
Yep? The church is old? Okay. Okay, we need to start polling and listening to the young people. Okay, so here, I mean, we can have 100 different, and I'm not, the point is, Revelation is not a how-to manual, it's not. It's not a, "Hey, church, here's all the new programs that you need to start to reach people." It's just not. What is the purpose of Revelation? Tell me. To prepare? Where does Revelation point you? To Jesus. Okay, so the point is, is that I just wrestle with this. Okay, so, so the point is, is that I just wrestle with this. our brothers and sisters long ago, as they were extending the kingdom of God, they wrote things like this, like in James, chapter one. "Count it all joy, my brothers and sisters, when you meet trials of various kinds; for you know that the testing of your faith produces steadfastness, and let steadfastness have its full effect, that you may be perfect and complete, lacking nothing." So they go out there and they sit, and remember the stories and acts where, where they get beat because of the name of Jesus? And whether they go, they went home and they said, can you believe it? What a great day! I was counted worthy to suffer the name of Jesus. What an awesome day this is. And here we have church workers and we have churches that are closing and they're struggling with their mental health. And they're struggling with, with what do we do? And we have churches all over this country who are saying, oh, man, should have been there in 1947. Boy, that was our heyday. There's a challenge, the, the, what we've got to do is we've got to respond to the call of Christ Jesus. And he, over and over and over in Revelation, is going to call us back to be the people he's called us to be. Does that make sense to y'all? That's what we're going to see. Okay? So it's really important that we look to Jesus because for a lot of churches, I think that there's a, remember this, this quote by Mark Twain, and he, he once said, "The reports of my death have been greatly exaggerated." I think a lot of the churches fail to believe that Jesus is alive, that he is still the head of the church, that he is still the head of this church, and that there are still great days ahead. And so what Jesus is going to do over and over and over again is he's going to call us back to who he is and the mission that he has called us to. And it's, in some ways, it's not going to be, it's not going to be easy. It's going to hurt in some cases. And that's okay. But what kind of God allows his church and his people to go through suffering so that they reorient themselves to the mission of God? And the challenges of, the challenge of Revelation is to see that a loving God does exactly that, to call his people back. Why? Because he loves sinners. He loves you. He loves people. He loves especially those who don't know him. And he's called each one of you to go and make disciples of all nations. All right. Questions on that before we dive into Revelation? Yes, Chris?
So we should count it as a blessing that we are going through the statistics that we're going through today because it will refine and refocus us on.
Yes, because, yes, so he, Chris said, we should count it a joy that, that we're going through the statistics and the, and the things that we're seeing because, because God's going to use that as a way to refocus us. Is that basically what you're saying? Yes, I would say yes to that. I would also say that we have to prepare, right? So somebody talked about being prepared for that. But yes, God does it all the time. And, and he is going to allow those things to happen, and he's going to work through those things so that people come to know Jesus. And his ways are not our ways, and his thoughts are not our thoughts, declares the Lord. Right, all right. So this is, this is about, what we're going to see here in Revelation is about turning our eyes to be fixed on Jesus. All right. So let's begin here. This is, this is the image that, that John has. So I'm just going to walk through this here. So verse nine, Revelation, chapter one, verse nine. "I, John, your brother and partner in the tribulation and the kingdom, and the patient endurance that are in Jesus, was, was on the island called Patmos, on account of the word of God and the testimony of Jesus." So we talked about that last week, that yes, he's there because he's preaching the word, but he's also there because Jesus Christ has allowed him to go there. Okay, and so that's where the, the vision comes. It's also very important. In, let's see here. Look at verse 19 real quick, we jump ahead real quick. So it says, right there for these, the things that you have seen, those that are and those that are to take place after this. So many people will read Revelation as if it is primarily about events in the future. Like John is seeing this vision, right? And it's all about future events. That's not true. It is first and foremost applied in a, in a, in a historical context, but the, but the principles that we're seeing in that historical context also apply across time, up until the time that Jesus returns. Okay, so when, so go back to, to verse nine. So when John writes, "Your brother and partner in the tribulation," he's talking about the suffering that's happening, happening right now, that people are experiencing across the Roman Empire. Okay, verse 10. "So I was in the spirit on the Lord's day." What does that mean? What was he doing? I'm sorry? Worship. He was in church on Sunday. Now, I didn't know that there was a church on, on the island of Patmos. There wasn't, okay? But he was worshiping on the Lord's day. What's the Lord's day? Sunday. Okay, why is he worshiping on that day, not on Saturday? Because that's the day that Jesus rose from the dead, right? So why do we worship on Sunday? Same reason. Okay? All right, verse 10. "I was in the spirit on the Lord's day, and I heard behind me a loud voice like a trumpet." So again, here, we're, we're talking about symbol, symbols and things like that. So when you look at throughout the scripture, what you're going to find is that when you, when there's a trumpet, it means God's announcing something. It's, it's a way of saying, pay attention. What I'm about to say is really important, so get your pen out, you know, kind of thing. Right, so that's what's happening. Verse 11, saying, "Write what you see in a book or in a scroll and send it to the seven churches." So again, we talked about this last week, that the number seven is symbolic of saying all churches, but the first churches to receive this letter are going to be these first seven. Okay, and those first seven are in Ephesus, Smyrna, Pergamum, Thyatira, Sardis, Philadelphia, city of Brotherly Love, and Laodicea. So you have in your, in your hand a, a map, and you can kind of see what's happening is when you get, when you go from Patmos to the mainland, guess which city you hit first? You hit Ephesus first. And so this is just following the, from city to city to city to city to city. So these aren't random churches, but these are all of those. And keep in mind, we'll get to Ephesus next week, but keep in mind, who was the bishop? Or who was the primary pastor and teacher in, in Ephesus? Or let me go back and say, who planted the church in Ephesus? Paul planted the church in Ephesus. Matter of fact, it was his favorite place to go. He, he was there in Ephesus more than any other place. Then John, the Apostle John, the writer of Revelation and of the Gospel and First, Second, Third John, he was there as the pastor. So, and then he had a, he had a guy, his disciple was named Polycarp. And Polycarp was the bishop in the church in Smyrna. So here's the deal. If you're the church in Ephesus, you've been planted by the Apostle Paul, and your preacher every Sunday is the Apostle John. Man, wouldn't it be great to be that church? Right, and they get a letter. And not only that, but what's the very first thing that Jesus says? You've left your first love. So what happens is we look at that and we say, oh, what does that mean for us? Okay, all right. Verse 12. "Then I turned to see the voice that was speaking to me, and on turning I saw seven golden lampstands." The, the lampstands are going to be defined here in just a moment. "And in the midst of the lampstands, one like a son of man." Okay, so this is really important. So turn in your Bibles. Let's go back to Daniel, chapter seven. So Jesus in the Gospels is called lots of things. He's called Christ, he's called Lord, he is called, Christ meaning Messiah, all kinds of things, and, but his own favorite title for himself was Son of Man. He calls himself the Son of Man more than any, any other title. So this is Daniel, chapter seven, verse 13. So Daniel's seeing this vision. "So I saw in the night visions, and behold, with the clouds of heaven, there came like a son of man; and he came to the ancient of days; and he was presented before him, and to him was given dominion and glory, and a kingdom that all peoples, nations, and languages should serve him. His dominion is an everlasting dominion, which shall not pass away, and his kingdom, one that shall not be destroyed." So this Son of Man is is God himself as the ruler and authority over all. Okay, so let's look here. Go to Matthew, chapter 26. So many times what people say is they'll say, you know, you read the Bible and Jesus never claimed to be God, and ever, everybody ever heard that? You know, like, you know, we want Jesus to show up and say, hey, you know that, that Yahweh fellow from Exodus, chapter three, the burning bush guy, you know, the, the, the creator? Ta-da, that's me, you know? He doesn't do that. Not the way we think. But if we, if we look at the way that people reacted to Jesus, they knew exactly what he was saying. So when he says things like, before Abraham was, I am, they're ready to kill him. Okay, so Matthew, chapter 26, so he's standing before Caiaphas, the high priest. 60, verse 62. Matthew, chapter 26, verse 62. "And the high priest stood up and said, 'Have you no answer to make?'" So this is, he's on trial. "What is it that these men testify against you? But Jesus remained silent, and the high priest said to him, 'I adjure you by the living God, tell us if you are the Christ, the Son of God.'" "Jesus said to him, 'You have said so, but I tell you, from now on, you will see the Son of Man seated at the right hand of power and coming on the clouds.'" "Then the high priest tore his robes and said, 'He is, he has uttered blasphemy.'" So the high priest, we look at that and we're like, ah, whatever. Right? The high priest looks at, hears what Jesus says and tears his robes and because he knows exactly who Jesus is claiming to be. You follow, you see that? So now go back to Revelation, chapter one. So John is seeing one like the Son of Man. And the Son of Man has what? Has authority and dominion over rulers, over authorities. This is what Colossians, chapter one says. This is who this is. Okay? Yes. Okay, so if you, so this is, it's a great question. So in Greek, this is a Greek translation, right? So you don't have, you don't have the definite article here. So the definite article is the word the, right? So sometimes when you have not a definite article, you assume it's just a, right? So this is a translation because there is no definite article. Now, why there is no definite article of, why it's not the Son of Man? And why it's translated a Son of Man? That I don't know. But here's what I do know. Here's what I do, if it stopped and said, one like a Son of Man, period, and then go on and tell me what the vision was, I'd be, I'd be a little bit more confused. Does that make sense? So we know exactly who this is because we're going to see who this is. All right. Verse 13. "So he's clothed with a long robe." So number one is he's clothed with a long robe. What does that tell you? What kind of person is this? Sorry? Not royalty, we're going to get to that. What, he's a priest. He's priestly. Okay, so he's got a robe on. And he's got a golden sash around his chest. Now, what do you know? He's not just the high priest, but now he's what? He's royal. He's both a king and a priest. Verse 14. "The hairs of his head were white, like white wool, like snow; his eyes were like a flame of fire; his feet were like burnished bronze." What does that mean? It's, it's bronze that has been refined. Okay? Refined in a furnace. "And his voice was like the roar of many waters." Verse 16, "In his right hand he held seven stars; from his mouth came a sharp, two-edged sword; and his face was like the sun shining in full strength." Okay, we're gonna, we've got to do a couple of things here. How much time we got? First and foremost, go to Hebrews, chapter four. So this two-edged sword is his word. And, and his word is going to be what, Sandy? It's going to be both law and gospel. Thank you. Sorry to put you on the spot. Okay, Hebrews, chapter four. Sorry, I'll get there real quick. What verse? You say, see, you know where I'm going. Verse 12. "For the word of God is living and active, sharper than any two-edged sword, piercing to the division of soul and of spirit, of joints and marrow, and discerning the thoughts and intentions of the heart." So the word of God is going to come from Jesus and it is, and it is going to, it is going to cut. And it is going, and, and we, when we stand before it, it's, it's going to be like Job, right? You're going to be just, or you're going to be like, I'm a man of unclean lips. Right, and you're going to be, and we're going to see what, what happens to John. Okay, now let's take, take a look here also to who this person is standing in front of, of John. So turn a couple pages over to Hebrews, chapter seven. So a lot of commentator, commentators and theologians think that this person, I think, I think that there's some, some truth to it. And, and I'll tell you why here in a second, but Hebrews, chapter seven, verse one, we want to think about who is this person that is both king and priest at the same time? So for this, Melchizedek, so this is, this is the king of righteousness. The king of Salem, so what's the king of Salem? Salem is peace, the son of Shalom. What is, what, what city is named after Salem? Jerusalem? Okay, so this is, this is all the way back with Abraham in the Old Testament. So, so for this, Melchizedek, king of Salem, priest, so he's king and priest, priests of the Most High God, met Abraham, returning from the slaughter of the kings and blessed him. "And to him Abraham apportioned a tenth part of everything." He is first, by translation of his name, king of righteousness, that's what it means. And then he is also king of Salem, that is, king of peace. Now here's the deal. Verse three, "He is without father or mother or genealogy, having neither beginning of days nor end of life, but resembling..." but resembling the Son of God, he continues a priest forever." So this is the person that is standing before John in Revelation, is this Melchizedek person. Okay? So verse 17. "So John, when I saw him, I fell at his feet..." Uh, I think the best way to translate this is "dead as a doornail." But then here's the thing. So we're talking about, we, we, we spent some time talking about where are we at as the church? And every single one of us, I think, probably thinks to ourselves, "Darn it! We gotta get busy. We gotta do better. We gotta do this, 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 this." I was, uh, doing some marriage counseling with a, like pre-marriage counseling with a couple. And we're in Ephesians chapter five and then we were in First Corinthians 13, talking about love and, and, and the couple said to me, "Man, I gotta do better. I'm not that good. I gotta get better." Now is that a wrong thing to say? No. But for all you married people out there, how successful are they, are they gonna be at getting better? Here's the point. Is, the point is, is that when we see that Ephesians chapter five is a reflection of, your marriage is a reflection of how Jesus loves you, the church. When we look at First Corinthians 13, the love chapter, when we see that that's how Jesus loves you, we first have to see that, "Wait a minute, wait a minute. Not, it's not about what I do, it's about what Jesus does in me and through me and for me first. Now I can go forward in faith." Does that make sense to everybody? So first, before I can even begin to have a fighting chance to love my wife, I have to know that that's how Jesus loves me. And now I have a fighting chance, as sinful as I am, a fighting chance to love my wife in a, in a way that reflects God's love for me. Am I making any sense up here?
Amen.
So what happens here is the reason I say, what does it take for a church to be effective? What does it take for the church to say, "Wait a minute, the mission of God matters. We first have to come back to Jesus. We first have to, have to stare Him in the eye." And here's what happens, is, is John falls on the, on the, on the ground, dead as a doornail. But then Jesus says what? "But He laid His right hand on me, saying, 'Stop being afraid. I am the first and the last and the living one. I died and behold, I am alive forevermore and I have the keys to death in Hades.'" So Hades, uh, in Revelation especially, is always, um, it's John's way of saying "the grave." Okay, so it's death and the grave. Okay, six feet under. So here Jesus, you know, I mean, how many of you think if Jesus walked in the door and said, "Um, hey, I wonder how my church is doing here?" What would He do? Would He shake His finger at you? "How dare you do that, da, 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 da?" Pastor Micah especially, "Come over here." You know? What would He do? He would smile at you. He would love you. He would come to you and He would say, "Remember, I am the first and the last. I am the beginning of the Omega. Remember the cross, remember the empty tomb. And remember, I'm going to do this work through you." That's where we start. We don't start with, "Well, I got a committee we gotta be on." How many of you wanna sign up for a committee? Right? What we do, our response is we come back to Jesus. And we say, "Lord, forgive us." And, and, and we repent. And we're gonna look to you, trusting in you alone. See that? Because what follows here is not a, um, you know, "Hey, what you really need," sorry to, uh, call Walt out, "but hey, what you really need here is you need some more chili cook-offs here, folks." Or, you know, "Somebody needs to get on that website." You follow me? It's not what the Lord Jesus is gonna say to us. Alright. Verse 19. And, and let me just say this before you, don't hear what I'm not saying, right Sandy? I say that all the time. Don't hear what I'm not saying. I'm not saying that all of those things and programs and plans and committees and all of that stuff, I'm not saying that any of that is bad. But we got, we got plenty of that. Oh, man, well, you saw the graph. You know, right? We have plenty of that and it's still happening. And the call of the church is to come back to Christ, to see Him for who He is, to have your socks totally knocked off. And when people in the Gospels experienced the living God in the person of Jesus, what happened to them? They couldn't keep their mouth shut. Even though Jesus said, "Don't tell anybody about it." They couldn't help themselves. So what about us? If evangelism is struggling, if evangel, evangelism is on life support, then what we need is we need to see a vision of Jesus for who He is. And that's the vision that we get in Revelation. Okay, verse 19. "So right therefore the things that you've seen..." And again, here's really important, so we understand the historical context. Um, the things that you've seen, those that are, in other words, the things that are happening right now. And the, and those that are to take place after this. So it's both what's happening right now. So I'll say, say it this way. Revelation isn't, is, is a, in a lot of ways, it's pushing political buttons. It's going to push political buttons because it's calling out Rome. They don't know it, but it's calling it out. And similar things are gonna be, are gonna be happening in Revelation. So it's speaking to where they're at in the moment. But it's also looking down and saying, "The similar things that are happening during that time are, we're gonna be looking at things that happen in our world saying, 'Wait a minute. That kinda looks exactly like what happened way back when.'" And we're like, "Yep, that's gonna happen a lot." Okay? Verse 20. "So as for the mystery of the seven stars that you saw in my right hand and the seven golden lampstands..." The seven stars are the angels of the seven churches. So, do you know that Prince of Peace has an angel? It's kinda walking around saying, "I'm watching you guys." Right? So we got one of those. Every church does. Uh, or the seven, or the seven angels of the churches. And the seven lampstands are the seven churches. So what's gonna happen is you're gonna find, you're gonna see in the letters, uh, to these seven churches, Jesus Christ is going to say, basically, "If you don't repent, I'm gonna remove my lampstand from you." What does that mean? Does it mean your constitutional bylaws? Does it mean your, your 501(c)(3) status? What does it mean? It, it means His presence. Yes?
Pastor, I have heard it said that an angel is the messenger of God.
Yes?
And that the angels in the churches are actually the pastors that brought the message to us. Does this follow through?
So we're gonna talk about that because there are some people who would say, uh, that the angel is actually the pastor of the church. Uh, but in Revelation, John doesn't use the word angel to refer to the pastor or to a person. So if, if that's the case, that would be unique here in these seven letters. So, uh, what I'm gonna, what I'm gonna, we'll unpack a little bit next week, is that the angel to the, to this particular church is an actual angel. Does that make sense? We'll talk about that a little bit, but you're right, Rosie, that there's some that say, "No, it's the pastor." So we'll talk a little bit more about that next week. Any other final questions, um, before we end? Hey, thank you so much for, um, for, I told y'all it's gonna be a journey through Revelation. Uh, thank you for your commitment to it. Um, you know, Revelation or any, any part of the Bible, I always say, it's kinda like watching toast cook, right? You're looking at the, in the, in the toaster and you're like, "When is it ever gonna get brown?" And all of a sudden, bam, it's brown, you know? It's kinda the same way. So over and over and over, we get to, we get to see Jesus for who He is, but that's what we gotta keep doing. Keep our eyes fixed on Him. Alright? Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I thank you for today. I thank you for your word and I thank you for this vision of, of Jesus Christ for who you are. And Lord, I pray that, that we receive a word of, of warning, a word, a word of, "Hey, wake up." Uh, but also a word of, of grace, of, "I, this is who I am. Uh, I'm the one who died, I'm more than that, I'm the one who's alive and well and I'm working through you even now because I love people who are far from me." And Prince of Peace Lutheran Church in Carrollton, Texas, at 4,000 Midway Road, "I'm working through you to reach those who don't know me." And Lord, I pray that you walk with us. You equip us by your Holy Spirit. May we constantly repent for where we have failed, but constantly look to you for our hope and our future. We pray in the name of Jesus. Amen. God bless you. We'll see you next week.